Good morning, everyone. Welcome to our October 7th, 2025 Board of Commissioners meeting. Our first order of business, if you are able, please stand and join me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, everyone. Agenda review.
Mr. Chair, there are no changes to the agenda today.
Move or approve?
Second.
Got a motion and a second for the agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item three, County Ditch 16, set a hearing. Craig, good morning.
Good morning, Craig.
Morning, Craig.
Morning. We're here to set a hearing for repair hearing for County Ditch 16. The Blue Earth County Ditch 16 watershed has approximately 2,277 acres in size and is located in Mapleton and Danville townships. Based on inspections of the County Ditch 16 open ditch, a repair report was developed by Blue Earth County Drainage Staff Consultant with Mr. Chuck Brandl from ISG to develop a repair report. An informational landowner meeting was held on June 30th, 2025 to discuss the proposed repair report, including costs and plans. At today's meeting, we are requesting the drainage authority to approve the draft finance order setting a repair hearing date for November 4th, 2025.
Got a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any questions, discussion?
I just appreciate, you know, wish it's a little farther back than normal, but working around fall harvest, so thank you for that.
Very good. Got a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Craig. Stefan, good morning.
Good morning.
You're next on the list. Thank you for joining us.
Absolutely.
See if we got a couple of action items and some updates.
We do, yep. So, a couple of action items and then some updates. Starting out with the consideration of final payment for State Aid Project 007-598-036, which was the County Road 157 box culvert replacement over County Ditch 96. Project was completed last year, last fall. Few cleanup items and some seeding got touched up this spring. And we're here ready for a final payment to RNE Enterprises of Mankato. The original contract amount was $151,352.50. That seems a little low. If it does to you, that's because that was a project that we purchased the box culvert itself ahead of time. There was a group of about five different projects we did that for last year. We purchased it, we can still submit it for state aid reimbursement through a force account process. But we did that just because of the timing and we wanted to have the box available when we wanted to get it in the ground. So there is additional cost on top of that. I apologize, I didn't bring that with me, but I believe that box was right around another $150,000. So this is final payment number five. The final payment amount is $9,965.97 for a final contract amount of $159,732.62. So I guess with that, I would answer any questions and request consideration of the final payment.
I'll move the approval.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to pay the final bill? Any questions, comments?
My comment is I think that's a really good policy to order those box culverts ahead of time, so they're there when we... Those box culverts just don't show up when you, if you order them right away.
Yeah, you know, the industry has gotten a little better now. If you recall back last year, there was a real struggle where some of these box culverts were out, you know, 12 to 16 weeks. Now I think it's down closer to four to six. So, you know, usually we can work that into our contract just based on the sequencing of when things go. But yeah, certainly a year or two ago, that was the right process. And we'll cer- we certainly have that on our radar and as a tool in the toolbox, so to speak. We've done it with streetlights as well, because those tend to have a long lead time. So some of the work on Victory, we actually had ordered those streetlights and had them ahead of time.
Great idea.
Any other comments? Hearing none, have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
The second item for your consideration is the adoption of the 2026 to 2030 Transportation Improvement Program Plan. This plan was published on the website. There were public service announcements published in the paper and on the website requesting review and comment. That was in late August. Those comments were requested by September 24th. We really received fairly minimal comments. Few of the cities reached out as far as schedule coordination. You know, if they, if they had a project, what year would they want it from a budgeting perspective? So a lot of those revisions have been incorporated into the plan. So at this time, I would request adoption of that transportation improvement plan for 2026 to 2030.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for the transportation plan. A lot of work and effort went into that, so I appreciate all your staff time and energy. We've talked about it several times, so... Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Next item I have is just some informational updates, project updates. The main project we still have ongoing is that County Road 10 project from the West County line to County Road 20. The contractors, RNE Enterprises of Mankato, and they continue to work on the grading activities, primarily focused on the bridge area now and continuing to work their way west and north. The gravel placement on the east end of the project is complete. They just continue to try to get that gravel hard, because they're ready to, they want, like to get that paved here in the next week or so. And then they also continue to place gravel, working their way west of County Road 32. The bridge rails were poured yesterday, so that bridge should be available for construction traffic and local access probably later this week. And that's important because it, not only for our contractor to get dirt from one side of the bridge to the other, but also for shifting the access for residents out there and allowing them to go a different direction, so we can start working on a different segment of the road. They're still working towards the November 15 completion date to get the road back to gravel west of 32. It's going to be a challenge. There's still a fair, fair amount of work out there, so we're going to be working with the contractor to try to come up with what our final product is, with the intent of having the road open for the winter and potentially having another closure in the spring to finish work up. Second update is for the County Road 26 Bridge Replacement. This is replacing an existing culvert with another box culvert that's defined as a bridge. That's why we refer to it that way. Still working on the right-of-way acquisition there and anticipating that one being a spring or early summer construction 2026. The County Road 139 Bridge Replacement is just wrapping up. They're working on the gravel surfacing and the turf establishment. That bridge should be opening to traffic this week or early next week. The County Road 156 Bridge Replacement, which again was a box culvert, that opened on Friday, last Friday, so that project is complete. The County Road 14 Bridge Replacement, again, another box culvert. They completed the paving yesterday. They should be getting in to do the shouldering and some of the turf establishment this week, again anticipating the opening, the project fully this week or early next week. The County Road 40 Slope Repair, which is a project that has not started yet. RNE Enterprises of Mankato is the contractor on that one as well. We left that as a project that could be done either this fall or next spring. The early indication was they were going to try to do it this fall. We've tried to push them a little bit and say, maybe just wait till the spring, focus on County Road 10. We don't have a full update on that, but yeah, depending on how their progress goes on 10, that could be this fall or early next spring. Weather dependent, obviously, being right along the river.
Fall could be a lot longer than we think, so...
Get 10 done first.
No, I certainly agree, get the 10 done first. We might have time with the...
We had fall all, all winter last year, so...
Yeah. We don't, we can't count on that, unfortunately.
Nope, we can't.
County Road 5, from riverfront up to summit, that's a project that we're in design with Bolton and Mank designing that for us. We received the 95% plans. We did a quick review of them from a right-of-way perspective, so there's a few minor edits that are being made for that, so that we can get going on the right-of-way acquisition here in the next couple of weeks. Just an update, we're also working with the UP Railroad on an agreement for that crossing. It started out as we need to add some panels, some concrete panels on the west side of the road to accommodate the sidewalk that's being added with our project, but following our meeting, it came to light that they're also going to replace the entire crossing, all the concrete panels across. It sounds like it's, their, their position is it's 100% county cost, so we're working with them on that, because I have some history at other plant locations where we have gotten them to participate, but that was quite a few years ago and their policies certainly could have changed by now. The County Road 15 and 28 in St. Clair Project, the underground work on County Road 28 North should be complete this week, and then the contractor will be moving into the roadwork next week on that segment. They still are on schedule to complete both County Road 28 North and the city's shallow drive by the end of the month here and have that curb and gutter and the first two layers of pavement back on and open for the winter. Main Street or County Road 15 through town is closed right now because they had to extend the sanitary sewer out into the intersection, but again, that should be opening by the end of the month as well, and they are going to put that back to a temporary pavement. So everything should be paved by the end of the month. And then the rest of the work on County Road 15 will be done in 2026. County Road 10 from Vernon Center to the east, not a major update on that. We've hired WIDCEF Engineering to do the design work on that. They're working on the final bridge plans and we're waiting for a 60% roadway plan to do some review on that project. County Road 69 Reconstruction, which is our, one of our grading projects for 2026, we're designing that in-house. We're at about 90% design. We do have some storm sewer challenges out there just because of the nature of the area and where the water runs, so we do have Bolton and Mank hired to assist us with that and come up with a final storm sewer design, and we will be entering into right-of-way acquisition mode here in the next month. Maintenance activities, we're continuing to gravel, or to blade the gravel roads as moisture allows. It's been pretty dry lately, but, and we're also wrapping up mowing out the north third of the county, and then following that, we'll start into the shoulder cuts and back cuts. Some ditch cleaning is taking place along with some tile and intake repairs, and then also working on driveway widens, new driveway installations, driveway relocations, some of those types of items as time allows. And then also continue, continue with bituminous patching as weather allows here in this fall. On the Rapidan Dam, I think you had a memo that Ryan put together before he took some time off, and, and I'll just give highlights of that if that's all right. On the bridge, we did meet with, or we received a letter from the Minnesota Chippewa concurring with the Bolton and Mank report that the dam is not eligible for listing on the National Register of Historic Places. So that was a stepping stone to continue with the environmental documents. So that was a critical step. We've been meeting with our consultant, TKDA, regularly, just talking about the bridge design. I think the big one that came up that, you know, nothing needs to be decided today, but there's been some questions about aesthetics on the bridge. If, you know, if the county wants to incorporate any aesthetics, there'll also be a small retaining wall in the southeast corner of the bridge, you know, and same question goes there. Do we want, look like limestone, have some limestone finish on it like we did on County Road 1, or are there other elements that, so if anybody has any great ideas, we'd love to hear them and see what can be incorporated. Some of the ideas were putting form liner in the concrete on the pier, on the piers that designated water elevations prior to the dam or the crest of the dam elevation, something significant. And then also the, Ryan met with MINDOT and the Federal Highway regarding bridge funding, because our original estimate on that bridge was 15 million for the bridge, about a $22.3 million project cost, and currently our estimates are up at 25 million. So the discussion was regarding that increase and that 20, anything over 20% from the original requires approval at the Washington DC level. So anything less than that can be at the regional office level. So we're working with our consultant to try to refine that cost, because right now the estimate has a pretty significant contingency in it, and as we push forward in design, we'll be able to bring that contingency down. As far as the dam itself goes, we met with FERC in early September. They are somewhat on a holding pattern. They kind of need a preliminary design and the actual project limits to proceed, so they're just, they're somewhat on hold. They're just kind of waiting for that to come to fruition, and that's what BAR is working on right now, that 30% plan. We think that's the right product to supply to them. The, the area of potential impact has kind of been shifting a little, so we need to finalize that and pin that area down, and then FERC will proceed. BAR design meetings, like I said, they're working on that 30% plan for both the dam removal and the slope stabilization. We did meet with FEMA there towards the end of September, and they're starting the repair scoping and cost estimation project, process. So we finally reached the point where we agreed on what the items were, the damaged items were. Now is the next step of putting a cost to those items. The one outstanding item is still the, well, outstanding, they've made their determination, but the lost sediment behind the dam, we had submitted that sediment, BAR had submitted that quantity to FEMA for reimbursement. FEMA has denied that, and they issued a letter to that effect. Some of the findings or reasons for that, they stated that the, in order to be eligible, the county would have had to have a plan to maintain the sediment on a regular schedule, and we didn't have any records of routine maintenance. Likewise, we didn't have great records of the clearing the debris from the channel. We did not have any design or specifications establishing the pre-disaster sediment as an improvement, so they're saying it accumulated over time. It wasn't something that was part of the design of the dam, and that was their basis for saying it's not eligible. We do have the option to appeal that, that judgment, but we have 60 days from the issuance of the memo to challenge it. And so that, from a staff perspective, we're not confident that the challenge will result in a different determination, to be quite honest with you, and it would require a significant amount of coordination between the county, BAR, likely the county attorney, and has the potential to become a real technical and legal challenge. And in the end, it may not change where FEMA stands on this, on this. So, you know, I guess that's something I would ask if you have any comments or direction for staff. I mean, at this point, we're...
The last two or three times that question's been posed to us, we have not challenged it.
Okay.
With staff recommendation. It's just a lot of extra time and energy. You'll either one come up with the same answer that you just referred to, or even if they change their mind a little bit, what's the benefit in cash to us to justify all that extra cost?
Correct.
I just don't think it's worth the effort, but I mean, the rest of the board will have to weigh in, but that's, that's been our practice in the past. We've had this posed to us two or three times already in the same situation, so...
Yeah, I think now that we received the actual memo denying it, I think that's, you know, we're asking one final time and then...
I'm just excited that they're getting close to getting some numbers together for us, so...
I think that's kind of why we hire engineers and consultants, is to give us opinions. I don't know why we would go against their recommendation, so I would not support that.
Thank you.
Keep going.
And then the, kind of the last item, I guess, is just an update. Ryan did speak with Todd Cole in there at the DNR, and it sounds like they do intend to submit a $10 million bonding request towards removal of the dam. So it's, you know, we do have MINDOT, or the DNR somewhat supporting our efforts here, so that's, they've said that all along, but this maybe puts money where their mouth is.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Yeah, that's really all the updates I have, unless you have any questions or...
Do you have any questions for Stefan today?
We won't even talk about Highway 60. Close to hearing any rumblings? I mean, it's looking done.
Yeah, that's a great question. They are getting close to being done. I didn't hear the exact date. We do have, I was contacted by the MINDOT project manager. We do have a meeting with them on Thursday of this week to talk about the detour route and repairs that need to be made on the detour route on our County Road 13. So I do not have an exact date of the opening, but it sounds like it's imminent.
That will happen before the opening? They have...
That's part, that's part of the discussion. Generally, you know, we would ask that they do the repairs and get those done, but their, MINDOT is asking if they can do the repairs after taking the detour off just because of the traffic.
I think that would make sense to me.
Yes, I would support that. I think the concern we have is can they get it done this fall? And if not, you know, any damage that occurs over the winter, how do we treat that? You know, because they're doing their assessment right now.
Well, and if they don't get it done this fall, the damage over the winter will be greater than it would be otherwise.
Correct, and we want to make sure that they're on the hook for that, as opposed to, you know, taking their assessment that they're doing now and comparing that to the prior and saying, that's all we're doing. So that's part of the conversation we're going to have with them later this week.
13 coming into Garden City is getting the heck beat out of it.
Yes, it's rutting, there's significant rutting in the road, you know, in the wheel path, and then shoulders, certainly some shouldering, but Chad Willie was going to go out and also take a look and get a better assessment from our perspective, not just theirs, so...
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stefan, for the report today. All right, our next item is the county attorney update. Patrick.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, thank you. If you have any questions relating to the report, I'll answer any that you have. Couple of things I did want to bring to your attention is we, again, with the truancy intervention program, are working with community corrections in the school districts. We've had, had quite a few meetings and whatnot, trying to keep kids in school and whatnot. I know that's also an issue for the school districts. I just scheduled a meeting with District 77 coming up in a couple of weeks to address some of those issues as well. We met with local law enforcement, both City of Mankato and County and other, Lake Crystal and Mapleton PD, and talked again about, just as a reminder, of what we have as we call our, our PPS program, our prioritization of prosecution on school property. So that's one of those situations that law enforcement treats that as a priority in their investigation to get it to our office, and then we get it out the door within a couple of days, and it's scheduled with court administration within, at the most, supposedly at most 10 days down the street or down the road. And that's due to the fact that, you know, that our, our young people and having an impact, and if we schedule something, there's, there's first appearances that we have with adults right now that are three to six months out. And many times when we get those situations, it has not much of a meaningful impact, so if we can get the juveniles in and realize that they takes, that we take things seriously, and, and so does the schools and, and law enforcement, so that's one thing that we did make another point of emphasis to, because every, every so often, there's some turnover in, in law enforcement in the school districts and even our office, and just as a reminder to sit down and, hey, what, what's the program here and what should we be doing? So if you have any questions, concerns, or comments, please let me know.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pat.
All right, we'll move down to administration.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, the first item is the county board minutes for September 23rd.
Everybody have a chance to review the minutes? If so, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Is there any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Next are the bills for the two weeks indicated.
Move the bills.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for the bills. Is there any questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, item number six in your packet is the Human Resources Department Agenda. I just have informational items for the board today. First, we had a resignation of a registered nurse in our mental health center. Then we have filled a social worker in our child protection area in human services. We also had a promotion of a senior account clerk to an accountant in our finance department. We also have filled a correctional officer in our jail. And then we received a resignation of a library technician, and so we've initiated recruitment to refill that library technician. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board has on any of those items.
Any questions on any of those? Okay, move on.
Item number seven in your packet is a memo regarding Sheriff's Records Change Fund. We have a change fund for making changes. People come in and buy permits. We're finding that the amount that we have in that change fund is not keeping pace, and so the sheriff has requested an increase from $150 in that change fund to $300, so recommending approval of that change.
Move the approval.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Is there any discussion, questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
I'm hoping the next item is the last time I have to bring change orders for the All Seasons Arena. We have three change orders for your consideration today. First one being MetCon Trade Package 1A. This change order amounts to $664.50, involves installing some flooring, some removal of painting, and then reducing the scope of painting and graphics, and so there's that change order. And we have a change order for Laketown Electric of $325 for adding a light in the main lobby. And the third one is the large one for $13,189.54 for Becker Arena products. This is related to tariffs on the North Rink dashboards. So all these change orders combined are $14,179.4, so leaving a contingency of $90,285.81. We did have a grand reopening a couple of weeks ago, so that's why I say I hope this is the last we need to bring in front of the board, but we'll find out if there are some stragglers out there.
What are the wishes of the board?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for the change orders on the All Seasons Arena. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Item number nine in your packet is an amendment to our agreement with the University of Minnesota for extension. We have two changes to that agreement. One is adding a halftime administrative support specialist in lieu of the full-time county position that was recently vacated as a, the person in that role moved into a different county department, and so that position has been vacant for a couple of months. This particular change would bring back a halftime administrative support specialist hired by the University of Minnesota at what is effectively a lower cost to the county. So not only are we reducing hours, we're also reducing... So not only are we reducing hours, we're also reducing the cost of that role on a per-hour basis. The other change is to the elimination in twenty-six and in twenty-twenty-seven for the temp casual staff or the intern. That will be a savings of around eleven-thousand dollars each of those two years, so recommending approval of this amendment.
Some move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for the extensions agreement amendments? Any discussion? I know Josh worked extremely hard putting this together, and we will be sharing this with Niklet County, correct?
That is correct. The half-time, it'll be a full-time position, half-year, half in Niklet County, that's correct.
So good, I think we can still provide a good service for the constituents. Any other discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Item number ten in your packet is a resolution accepting donation of real property. Sammy Borniki is the owner of about eight acres of land and has an interest in donating that to the county, and so County Attorney's Office has developed this resolution granting the county administrator authority to move forward with a quitclaim deed to accept that donation, so asking for the board's authorization there.
What are the wishes of the board?
I'll move in.
Second.
Okay, got a motion and a second? Any discussion, questions?
What use will Blue Earth County make of this?
This eight acres is adjacent to the Red Jacket Trail Park, and so we'll make it part of our park. I anticipate, anyway, I mean, that's the natural thing. There is some gravel within this parcel, and so, excuse me, if there was ever a desire by the board to utilize that parcel for gravel purposes, that would also be an option. But clearly, the location next to the park is of value to the county.
If we use it for gravel, would we have to have another public hearing do that?
Yes, any gravel activity removal will go through a permitting process.
Okay.
Any other questions? I got a motion and a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Item number eleven in your packet is a financial status report for September thirtieth. This is basically three-quarters of the way through our fiscal year. You'll see total revenue sit at just under ninety-six million against expenses of one-hundred-and-twenty-one million. Not unusual at this time of year that, as we're waiting for those second-half property taxes to be received. Couple of items just to draw your attention to, again, the transportation sales tax at six-point-one million, slightly above last year at this time, but a little below our budgeted projection, so we have seen a little uptick again in those collections, which is positive. Our interest on investments remains strong, even though not as strong as last year, but certainly above what we had projected for our annual budget. The state and federal revenues at the top line of the revenue section are running a little higher than last year at this time and a little bit above our projection for the year, so that also is positive, even though those funds typically have been rather stagnant. On the expenditure side of things, you know, our total expenditures sit at eighty-point-five percent of our total budget. Again, the Public Works Building is having an impact on that where our budget for costs that we would incur in twenty-twenty-five, what we budgeted has turned out to be a little light compared to the progress that's been made on that project as they've been running ahead of schedule, so that is throwing off that building and equipment purchase line a little bit. Other than that, we line up pretty well with the budget with the exception of debt service, which those payments go out in December, I believe. In terms of the enterprise fund, then, we have revenues at just under four-point-five million against expenses of two-point-seven million. Again, this fluctuates in this regard when we don't have large equipment purchases or cell development at the ponderosa, so we are adding to reserves to fund those large expenses in future years. On the second page is cash and investment balances. You'll see towards the top, our cash sits at seventy-nine-point-three million against a six-month operating target of seventy-four-point-three million. Our total county funds more towards the bottom of the page sit at a hundred-and-sixteen million, effectively down, some from prior years, again, as the expenditures have been occurring for the Public Works Building. We will see that number pop back up when we receive the bond proceeds later this month. So I'd be happy to answer any questions the board might have on the financial status report.
Any questions?
I don't have any questions, but I think it's important to note that you, you talked about the transportation sales tax, and that's the half-percent sales tax that the county puts onto across Blue Earth County, correct?
Correct.
And it pulls in approximately eight-point-five million dollars a year. This talks about how important this is for us to take care of our roads and bridges across Blue Earth County. If we wouldn't have that, the, what we get back from the state of Minnesota certainly wouldn't cover what we have to do across Blue Earth County to keep our roads and bridges in operating position. I think it's really important that people understand that. It's, and, and the beauty of the half-percent sales tax is that a very large portion of that comes from people from outside of Blue Earth County that come into Mankato and buy, at Walmart and Target and different places. I think that's a, a pretty important part that people from outside of the county are helping us build their roads and bridges.
There's no doubt that it has really helped us maintain our roads kind of throughout the county and has been a, a nice revenue stream to allow us to maintain our roads.
Definitely.
Yeah, good point. Other questions or comments on the financial status? Okay, looks brings me to the end of my agenda. Anybody else have anything else for the good of the order? Otherwise, we will move on to our reports. Okay, Patty?
Well, it's fall, and it's harvest time, so I attended one meeting, and that was Department Heads on October first.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. Vance?
All right. After our last board meeting, I attended a MACAC or Community Corrections Annual Conference on the twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, and twenty-sixth. And let's see here, Department Head meeting on the first. I had a NACO Transportation policy meeting, Zoom meeting on the second, and then yesterday I had an MRCI Financial Board Committee meeting and a MRCI Board meeting. And that would be the end of mine.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mark?
It's, excuse me, on October first, I did a Department Head meeting, and on the second, had the Partners for Housing Committee meeting, and then I did go that evening at the downtown, at the, at the city center there, they just had a Metropolitan Plan, Transportation Plan Open House, and that was, I went, I went for the county, I don't know, so, kind of, it was the cities with the planning of their roads and stuff.
Very important for us to show up.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Commissioner?
Concludes my report.
Kevin?
Since our twenty-third board meeting on September twenty-ninth, AMC Drainage stakeholders, the Drainage Work Group stakeholders held a, a call, some real concerns, the environmental groups have petitioned the MPC regarding a need for permits for drainage systems. They believe that ag wastewater, as they call it, should be regulated as any other disposal system. Certainly AMC's got significant concerns about jurisdiction and the functionality, practicality of, of this. We'll cover it more in our, in our district meeting. And then yesterday, October sixth, we had a, a AMC Policy Coordinating Committee where we looked at all the priorities, came up with the priorities to vote on at the upcoming district meetings. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner.
The other ones I have to add to that, is I had my emergency communication board meeting. We just had the South Central EMS take over the administrative duties of that. It's working out very well. We have good participation, and again, to refresh your memory, we had talked about maybe getting out of that organization, but the members of that group want to keep it going, so now with Mark and his group helping us out with the administration, and because the county won't, doesn't have the resources to do it anymore, it seems to be working pretty well. So hopefully, we can even get back into the grant cycle a little bit, so that's pretty exciting. Then that evening, we had South Central EMS Annual Meeting. Everything's going fairly well there. The grants are still coming in for the childcare safety seats, and seatbelt money is still rolling in, so Mark and his group are doing a good job with that. I was also at the Department Head meeting, had planning and zoning meeting. We had two or three things on the agenda. Everything went fairly well, except we have a VRBO that's coming up through the ranks, and there was one person that testified, and we were short two members of the board. They were out farming, and so we had good discussion on it, but we did end up tabling it or continuing the hearing to our next meeting and try to work through some of these issues that they have. There is some covenants on the land, and so we're trying to determine, can we trump covenants? So we're going to staff, I directed staff to go back and talk with Pat's office to see how that works. I think at the end of the day, if, if, from my understanding is if it meets all the county requirements, it's, it's not allowable use, and the covenants are a civil issue, so we'll get work through that, hopefully have it a little better to being done when it gets here to this board after the next meeting. So I did appreciate them tabling it or continuing it just to give a little more discussion of the planning and zoning, so we don't have that discussion here and try to work it out. Gives us a little more time to work through some of those things. So it was a good, interesting meeting, and then I had several items on some ditch projects that I'm working on and some road issues, and still getting lots of calls on flooding and erosion issues, and been out to several sites and politely listened, but tell them that there's really not a whole lot the county can do on these private matters, is, but go and look, a lot of stuff going on out there. And that continues, that is the end of my report. If there's nothing else to do today, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to adjourn? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned.